My goodness, you're right.
Well-
This would still end up being a motion.
Miss Westbrook wouldn't have said that if I- I wouldn't have said it was right and it was wrong.
Oh, no, no, I-
So, and I'm- and I'm looking at what I wrote. And I can- I can understand as I'm gonna take the hit on that because I wrote it. But again, yes, I was writing kinda short here. But it does not- it isn't a complete sentence. And then I see where I scratched out something and then wrote the reason. What was it? What is that last word? Reason for?
A legal matter regarding employee.
But if you- if you look at what I wrote and what Ms. East wrote, it is not the same.
A legal matter regarding employee, that's what you wrote.
And she put a legal matter regarding employee.
Read- read- read mine first because I'm not mad.
It says, "The sacred priest-"
Are you reading mine or hers?
I'm- I'm reading yours.
Okay.
"The sacred priest made a motion to go into executive session." Motion to enter into executive session. Instead of the word "go," we used "enter." Then it says, "treasurer's evaluation." We added the word "to continue the treasurer's evaluation" in order to make the sentence. Then, there's the word "and," and Ms. Westbrook has the symbol "and" for that. And then she has- Ms. Westbrook, I'm sorry, she. Ms. Westbrook has "a legal matter regarding employee." And Ms. East put "a legal matter regarding and" in one place. She added the word "and."
I made a sentence out of it.
I was sentenced out of this.
I'll- I'll check again. I made- I made incomplete sentences.
I still think that I don't think to do when you have a copy issue, it goes faster than writing words out.
Look, my problem- Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And it would make it accurate.
My problem is, if you underline it, you still have to put together to make a sentence.
Right, right.
You see what I'm saying? So, underlining it is not gonna help.
Underlining will help because it will get us to the language that's in the Ohio Revise Code. That would be an improvement. It would make sure that we're using that precise language. It would not make it a complete sentence, but that would still have to be done in the treasurer's office. And the treasurer would still be responsible, in my mind, for reviewing the minutes and making sure the sentences are completed and remembered.
So then it would be the treasurer who would circle and dictate on her minutes.
Actually, I think that should be done by the person making the motion. That's very complex.
I think for a long time, we've rolled out a- I don't think we need to do that. I think if the treasurer has it in front of her and the motion is made, see, there's Noah. No, the motion, I can't say that because we got to add some problems with that. But anyway, she would be the one to circle it and say, "What motion did you make?" Because for us to do it during the meeting, as it is, we take up too much time doing stuff we shouldn't have to do.
I agree, but I want to back it up.
I do, too. But I don't think- I'll send her a piece of paper with a circle lines as a word. I mean, we make ten motions every day. I'm probably right. That's why I say that she's-
Well, we usually only make one motion, go into executive session.
Sometimes.
Usually. And if- if it's more than that, it's- it's- I can't think of any time when we've gone into executive session more than twice.
No.
I think that's a long way behind a- a break.
No, that's not. No, I was gonna reset, so I'll put it down. Okay, so what are we gonna do about May the fourteenth?
I think we should, uh, accept the minutes, actually.
I'm gonna accept it when your set's motion to enter to executive session, continue the treasurer's evaluation, and legal matter regarding employee.
On the other way, we need to have the treasurer or someone in the treasurer's office go over the recording and see whether this is what was said or whether something else was said.
Why don't we make amendment and straighten out?
Because we don't know whether that was what was said. And we can't-
Doesn't matter, it's wrong. Why don't we make it incorrect? That's correct.
What I'm saying is that we can't correct it to something that it wasn't original.
You don't know what this was for.
If we made the amendment incorrect, the motion incorrectly, that's still the motion that was made. And we have to have the motion as made on the minutes, even if we made the motion incorrectly. So, I- I think the two choices are to accept the minutes or to review the recording and see how the motion was actually made.
Okay. I- I- I'm- today is twenty, seven twenty. And I'm writing on the minute, on the- state. I make a motion that we amend this motion for executive session. To read, should I say? To read. And now, Eve Westbrook is making the motion to go into executive session for the sake of the treasurer's evaluation and consider the employment of a staff and a legal matter regarding employee.
I don't believe it was a genuine, to change the motion that was made when made, which now draw.
The difference is make by May or two life. It didn't intend to change the motion. The reason why- the reason why I say that is because if you remember what we went into executive session for, if you remember what we did in executive session, what's wrong with, um, making it correct? If you don't think we made it correct, let's table it because I want to write it.
I think we need to table it and find out what was actually said.
Would you withdraw yours?
I withdraw it, yeah. Yes, yes. No, 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 it's withdrawn. All the motions were withdrawn.
Madam President, I made a motion that we table the minutes for May fourteenth.
Second.
Second.
We will decide that we made the minutes for May fourteenth. What? Hold on, more discussion. The questions are discussion. Paul Logan.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Dr. Bahovia. Ms. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Yes.
Ms. Avery Priest.
Motion passes. We go to May the nineteenth.
Okay, on May nineteenth again.
We lose, yes, it's about three, three quarters.
Four, five, six, seven, I have seven.
Well, May nineteenth?
Yeah, it's not- it's- it's four sheets because there is maybe numbered when they're back and forth. So, it's four sheets.
That's about enough, right?
Okay, go ahead. May nineteen.
Madam President, on page two of the minutes. On the discussion items, it says, "Discussion on resolution to authorize a contract with the Ohio Facility and Facility Construction Commission." And it says, under that motion, uh, which is the usual itself, Tiffany Fisher and seconded by Ms. Westbrook, and then there is- there's neither a resolution nor that is their vote.
Okay, and that's-
I have page one and page four. And one and four, yeah. I have page one and page four stacked together. There's only two, three, four, five, six.
But four, you're on four.
I have one and four.
The ending of it is the document, oh, oh, five, two, oh, oh, unit on laws of scene project to stay in Ohio, it's going to be a point, I have a facility construction. And I don't recall having that at the meeting. And one of the concerns I've had in the past is that, um, there have been items that someone has had, Mrs. Noah has had them, and they were not presented to us at the meeting that they were adding to the minutes. And in my mind, it's inappropriate, and I don't know if this is one of the cases I really want to talk, but it is inappropriate for her to add, um, attachments that she has that back up what we're doing that we would not present it with at the meeting. Now, perhaps this one was, I'm really not a hundred percent sure, but I don't believe it was. And I know that that's happened in the past.
It was- it was- it was not. It was not. It was. This- it was signed that day by the president and just attached to the minutes.
Well, it was attached to mine. I have one and four.
But let me address her first issue in page nineteenth, where you said- where you said motion by Tiffany Fisher. I wrote it like that. And I sent Ms. East, because again, I mean, I sent Ms. East and I have my copy. I called Ms. East when I got the minutes to tell her that I did not, and I asked, "Where is the vote?" And since she had it, it's on the paper, and the vote went. And Ms. Fisher did make the motion to accept that. I- I seconded, and the vote went. Ms. Avery Priest wasn't present.
No, I was asked to vote.
The vote went, um- And it never went.
Oh, the vote I am-
No, you don't even have it.
Yeah, I don't either.
The vote happened during the, um, here. This is what she's talking about.
There's discussion.
The thing is, the way we're supposed to do that is to make a motion to put the resolution on the floor, at which point we can discuss it. So, if this was a motion to pass this resolution, it should have been placed with the resolution.
Again, why do you allow us to do it wrong if you know better? And then now that the minutes are wrong, you wanna say, "I- the- the way to do it would have been like this," as opposed to saying it during the meeting?
I have said things-
Then why say it now?
I have said things in so many meetings, and I am generally ignored. I have stated in the past-
It makes sense. We don't ignore you.
Far back as when, um, when Ms. McLaren was on the board. And there were numerous instances when Ms. McLaren would wanna discuss something that was not on the floor. And I would state repeatedly, and I- I-
Can we stick to the minutes?
Type that. That's the minutes. That's a concern about me.
Can we stick to the minutes? It's Noah.
Dr. Keenan and board members. The agreement for this project went before the board. The agreement was actually signed that night, but you had sign- uh, Dr. Keenan, you had signed it, and the following day, I signed it. So, I was not at the meeting, but you had to have this because it was signed. And then I signed it, and it had to go- it had to be delivered by the twentieth or twenty-first. It had to go out that day. That's why you had the meeting on the nineteenth. So, Ms. Westbrook called me. Th- this is the tally sheet that I received. And Ms. Westbrook called me and read to me what had occurred.
But it's not in the minutes. It says, "Motion by Tiffany Fisher settled by Ms. Westbrook. They have no vote in there."
There was no- there was no discussion item. That's just a mistake right there. That should have been one of the resolutions itself. There was no discussion item. Because I voted aye on that project.
She's made the motion and then you voted aye.
I voted aye on that. We never had discussion.
She made the motion.
Under discussion items. Everything was under building grounds resolution of the meeting.
Uh-huh.
That's what it was. That was just an accident that I'm seeing. The discussion items, that whole sentence, everything, that should need to be addressed.
Yeah, because it's the vote on it, so I'm not quite. After your motion, it didn't say your motion failed, it didn't say your motion went through, it didn't say anything.
It's simple, but I- I did- I have it. I did call to- to let her know how- when I saw it. That I wrote, you see, I wrote on there, "Where was- where's the vote?" And so, and I called. I- I didn't realize that that was the day I called and left it on the voicemail. Uh, and so, I got it. I have it back. Ms. Fisher did make the motion. I did second. Uh, Ms. Fisher naded. Uh, Dr. Keenan said yea. I said yea, and Dr. Bahovia said yea. But Ms. Priest was not there, so it was one, Ms. Fisher, two, Ms. Westbrook, three, Dr. Keenan, four, Dr. Bahovia.
And it states that. It states- And the- the vote is on page four.
Uh-huh.
It's on there. We just need to amend-
Not on my page, oh. This was the bottom of the motion. Page four, where's two and three?
I don't know where you were.
I'm looking at page four, the board is- Okay, okay. But I'm saying, where's page two and three? I don't- I don't have it. You don't have it either.
Yeah, I don't know.
I didn't- I'm looking on there.
I guess I-
I have one and four. Stable. So, what do we do? Do we just make it correct?
I don't do it, because I have two copies. I probably can't pick one. The second set went out. It was correct, so.
Is the second set, the one that has two, one and four?
No, I have all seven pages. I have all seven pages. I don't know if you guys have.
I have one and four.
Okay.
So, therefore, because you include the other. It's just a number statement. This is a number that needs to be put together somehow. It needs to be put together to go correctly.
I didn't realize nobody- everybody didn't have copies of it.
Mine came stapled.
Mine came stapled.
May nineteenth, page one and page four, and that's all I have.
It sounds to me as if what we need to do again-
It what?
It sounds as if what we need to do again is to table this until everybody has the same set of minutes. Because how can we approve a set of minutes when only two of us have minutes?
But if you table all of it, how you know everybody don't have all of them, or who don't have what? Unless we go through them right now. Because if we haven't got this far, we would not have known that, uh, Keenan and Priest did not have them. They only had two pages if we had to table all of them.
No, I'm not saying table all of them. I'm saying go through them one by one and see what the issues are.
Table May, uh, May nineteenth.
And so far-
We table on May nineteenth.
Table May nineteenth, right?
Table May nineteenth and make sure- I moved that we table May nineteenth. And I asked that everyone be sent a copy of all of these minutes that we have questions on with a date on it, you know, a date tomorrow or following, so that we can all have- you can all decide whether we're approving the same set of minutes or not.
That's from, so April thirteen, May eleventh, and May nineteenth, right?
Right, so we are right now. That's where we are.
So, we need copies of the minutes, April thirteen, May eleventh, and May nineteenth. And on it, put revised, so we'll know that-
And revised on one day.
On one day.
Wait, what is it? You skipped the fourteenth. Have we completed the fourteenth?
Well, the fourteenth was, can that motion be changed?
So, that's the-
We all had that one.
We have to- we have to listen to that, I think.
We all had it, but we don't know whether we change it or not.
So, we have the eleventh, fourteenth, and nineteenth right now, right?
How about the thirteenth, April thirteenth?
So, Madam President.
Ms. Fisher.
I think we're gonna do a Dr. Bahovia's motion.
I need a second on it.
Can I second? I'll second.
Okay. We move and second it. That we table May nineteenth along with each person received April thirteenth, then we double, and May the nineteenth. The revised motions, I'm sorry, the revised minutes. It'll be revised only if I did so we'll all have the same minute.
And dated.
And dated. So, now, question, discussion.
Madam President, my question is still the same one that I had earlier, because I feel like we're gonna need to get a final copy of the rest of these minutes. Can we take a recess and get a final draft copy in front of all of us? Because we're studying it another day, and we got all these other decks that are different.
But do we know right now that maybe some of us don't need, some of us do have complete copies, and I was the same as I was saying with Bahovia's motion? Unless we go through them one at a time, I won't know what- what you have, if yours is the same as mine or what Ms. Priest has, you know?
I think it's a good one, I don't know about you.
Right.
You know, like we do at this time. So, we have a problem.
Oh, I think that's true. I was saying we'll go one by one. The problem is, we're still gonna have the ongoing conversation, and no one has the same page. Like, the whole board doesn't have the same page. So, why not just give the whole board the same page now, we can start going through their question?
I just think when you start to do these minutes, you know how much it's going to let you talk for, for a while. Uh, that might take a lot of time and a lot of pain here. I'm confused. Let's see what we need.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll.
Dr. Bahovia, uh, Ms. Fisher.
To table minutes of May nineteenth.
Yes.
Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Yes.
Ms. Avery Priest.
Yes. Motion passes. We can bring the motion back to us, please, Ms. Noah.
Table the minutes of May nineteenth, and each person receive a revised copy of the minutes and dated.
Thank you. Let's move to May twenty-seventh.
I have revised on top of mine.
I have revised on top of mine. It came in that package where everything-
Oh, wait.
It's stapled. It came in that package where everything was stapled.
Yes, everything's stapled in bits.
And it says revised, and it's two pages.
And May twenty-seventh, it's two pages?
Uh-huh, and it has writing on it.
It has, uh- I have thirteen pages on May twenty-seventh. I have two pages.
Uh, you know what I mean? We have- we have one and thirteen. That's what we have.
I also have one and thirteen pages.
And one and thirteen. Let me see if I have one that has all thirteen. I don't know if this was, uh, someone wrote on it.
Wrote on which page? Page thirteen.
That's how it came back to me instead of my-
Well, they scratched me out. Oh, wow. Oh, you know, you know what? Ms. Miss- this is Ms. Priest, not Ms. Priest, I'm sorry, Ms. East. Because I called her to correct, uh, the public commentators. And it's obvious that's what she wrote. And just, I guess, did not bother to retype it. We can see if mine has it. Oh, it's coming. Uh, well. Was that the one? Uh-uh. Mine has exactly what I said to her. But this is, what I have is a revision. I don't remember the date. But the day I received it, when I went through it, I knew the expressions from the community was not correct, and I called her immediately to correct. Uh, and apparently, she just wrote on- on that and just sent it out. Because I- I mean, she typed mine up and resented, and I have exactly what I-
Ms. Noah, have you seen this?
Um, I- I have a copy of it here.
You have the revised, where she wrote in it?
Make them so.
Yes, but it's-
How many pages, how many pages does it have?
It's, um, thirteen pages. Two-sided. No, but yours is all out.
Mine doesn't have the correction.
And I have- I have the completed one where all the revisions are in the completed copy.
We're not gonna- we're not gonna file this for minutes, are we?
No.
With the revision part in there.
No, there's a typed copy with that language in it.
I don't know.
I'd also like to-
Ms. Westbrook, you have that?
I have- I have the correction, the- I have the revised copy, yes. What I told her when I called her the next morning. And I don't remember what even was sent. She retyped- she retyped mine, yes.
That's what I had.
And apparently, she retyped one of the doctors and sent hers. And I only checked that, the expressions from the community. I didn't check the whole- the whole thing once it was revised. You have it?
Yeah. Okay, that has the work on.
Look, on page two, it looks like we made the motion to have a recess. The motion was for the executive session.
Page two?
Page two, there was a motion to leave executive session.
Well, that could have done, but when the board come out, it's a decision in time, and it vote taken.
Right, that was the- that- that thing that comes after recess, that has, um-
Nine twenty-two P M.
Yeah, after that, it looks like the vote is to have the recess. The vote was to come on executive session.
Yes. But it's not, yes, that's- that's-
I mean, not the dynamics, but that's-
Right, it's not clear. I have it to enter into. And then it doesn't tell me when we came out and whether or not we took a vote. And the next is a recess.
Where- are you on page two? The top of page two?
Recession, I don't know where that one twenty-two fifteen is. I don't know what that is.
That's your resolution number, I presume.
Correct.
And that resolution, we should have gone with the motion for the executive session. Not to take this one.
So, one twenty-one is to enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee. That's one twenty-one. At six forty-nine P M. And- and recess, one twenty-two fifteen. I don't know. Let me see if I can find mine.
I think we did.
That was the motion to leave executive session.
Well, I don't- I don't know why you can have recess there.
I thought you were talking because we had been in executive session over two hours, and somebody asked for recess.
We also made a recess, but, um-
We did, but we also had a vote.
We came out of executive session. That was this motion. That was the motion I abstained for.
But you always do.
I always do.
Yeah.
So, that- that confirms in my mind that the motion that we were voting on was not a motion to recess, but a motion to leave executive session.
What confirmed? You said that?
Yes. That I abstained. But I abstained. I only abstained in general, very, very exceptions, on these motions to come out of executive session because it's my understanding that it's not legal to vote in executive sessions, so I'm not voting.
Is now what?
Not legal to vote in executive session. Therefore- Therefore, this recess, and to- we made the motion to leave executive session, we voted on that, and then we recessed immediately at nine twenty-two, and we- we went into executive, a regular session at nine thirty-six. And we had a fourteen-minute recess.
And that's what I'm saying. It was a- it was a recess in the- to enter into regular session, that the vote just happened to be out of- out of line.
Yeah, the vote is out of line. The vote- the vote should have come before-
After the nine thirty-six P M.
No, before the recess. We came out of executive session. We took a recess, and then we went into executive session.
Came out of executive session. We voted to have a recess.
We did vote to have a recess. We just said we're having a recess. We never voted to have a recess.
We said have a break.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at-
All right, switch it. I have my paper here. Thank God. Um, it says, "Dr. Bahovia made the motion to enter into executive session." And it was just written as what it was for. And that was at six forty-nine P M. And I also wrote here at nine twenty-two, and I- and I- and I see by my- she wasn't following my arrows because I can see, at nine twenty-two, Ms. Avery Priest made a motion to- Ms. Avery Priest made a motion to come out of executive session, Ms. Fisher second, Dr. Keenan, and I voted, and then Bohobia abstained. And I also wrote a break, fifteen minutes, this is after we're out of executive session, back into exec, executive session at nine thirty-six.
Regular session.
No, it, well, it just says session, not executive. It says back into session at nine thirty-six. Uh, then we made motions to adopt some resolution to close Prospect. Are y'all following me on there? Uh, then we did the welfare and public relations.
But before then, in that part, before we got to welfare and public relations, there's a motion to table a resolution to ratify certificated master of written, one twenty-four fifteen.
Yeah.
Oh, women, down here.
And I would like to get discussion included in this on that, because, because we have the power.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I would like to see discussion included, um, with that motion, because it was stated clearly, the reason I didn't want to vote on it was because we had gotten it at the end about twenty-four hours before, and we had had hundreds of pages of contracts, and I hadn't had time to finish reading them.
You were going to be hundreds of pages of contracts? Is that what you're saying?
I said that I didn't have time to, between the time that we received it approximately twenty-four hours before, and the time we were to vote on.
Okay, so the motion to table the resolution to ratify, does that come under buildings and grounds? Does that come under buildings and grounds?
No, that comes under, that should come under-
I'm asking her since, don't, don't, you're trying to make me forget, right?
So, so let me, let me go back.
Okay.
So after we were back into session at nine thirty-six, we had a report of committees. And the most, there was a motion to adopt a resolution to close Prospect. Then we went to, and I guess that's buildings and grounds. Then we went to welfare and public relations. Number one, resolution, number one, there was a resolution. Uh, discussion to ratify, it's, it's one. One. Ms. Priest made the motion, and Ms. Fisher seconded the motion, uh, to table, motion to adopt the discussion on rap-
That's what it is here, it's kind of confusing.
I try to write all of it as much as I can, so.
The motion, the-
It is a great job.
The motion to table should come under welfare and public.
It's, I said welfare and public relations.
Why you didn't, but it- Why shouldn't the motion be tabled?
I did, well, if I didn't, I said, I wrote, resolution, number one, it was a resolution. Motion made to table, and I said, Ms., Ms. Avery Priest, wait a minute, let me go, Ms., Dr. Bohobia made the motion to table, Ms. Avery Priest seconded, everyone else voted nay, and the motion failed.
Right, but that should come under welfare and public.
I said welfare and public relations.
I'm sorry, it's not on yours.
Okay, I'm just, okay, I'm waiting on it.
Yours sounds like it was fine, but in the minutes, it was not.
Because it should have come under welfare and public.
Welfare and public relations, number one, resolution to ratify the certain-
Well, look right above it. Motion to table the resolution, on top of the welfare.
Well, I have number one next to it, the resolution, uh, number one resolution. Where is it? Does anyone have the agenda for that? Do you have the agenda?
The motion to table.
No, do you have the agenda? Because I wrote number one, like, the, on the agenda, it was the first resolution. And then down at the bottom, I have number two, the classic, the three, two, was the second resolution.
Number one was the resolution for those.
That's under building grounds.
That's buildings and grounds.
That would be under A, and under B.
We'll never get it right now. Somebody has to stop and listen for a second. I, we passed buildings and grounds right now. That was the prospect.
In the minutes, she has that motion under, under buildings and grounds. That's what we're saying, that's why.
Buildings and ground, resolution to close Prospect, under buildings and ground.
Okay, what's the next?
Motion to table resolution.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about-
All right, all right. It should have been a sense that right here, welfare and public relations.
Should have come under there.
Yes.
I had three years old, I couldn't figure out what was going on.
Jesus. Oh, well, yeah, I have a caller on, and I called him before I got here. Called him again, he called me. Okay, so.
So this motion to table should be under welfare and public relations. Am I right?
That's the way it's written here on my tally sheet, right?
You see what we're talking about, Ms. Noah?
I do.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of the tally sheet?
I do.
Oh, all right.
And then we had two resolutions to ratify, uh, master of written, one twenty-six fifteen and one twenty-five fifteen. Is that correct?